Everyone, wow, I know y'all can hear me tonight. She's got the mics cranked up. But welcome to our September sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, six o'clock monthly meeting. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. I've asked Ms. Brown to lead us in our invocation, and Mr. Cook to do our pledge of allegiance, if you don't mind.
Heavenly Father, at this hour, we come for our monthly county council meeting. Lord, you know the things that are happening in our world and our country. The gun violence is going on everywhere. Ask that I continue to bless and keep us as we endure these things, knowing that ultimately it's all in your hands, Lord. You always know what's going on, and you have a reason for everything, and it's ours. We can question it, but it's not ours to really question, Lord, because you know. And we ask that I will continue to bless this county, folks all over who are bereathing, Lord, people who are sick, and those who are doing great, Lord, doing well. Continue to bless and keep them in the spirit in which you have always done. All these blessings we ask in thy son's Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Ms. Barnes, roll call, please.
Ernie Hamby.
Present.
Charles Jennings.
Present.
Chuck Cook.
Present.
Jackie Brown.
Present.
David Marr.
Present.
G.P. Callison.
Present.
James Upchurch.
Present.
Okay, great. We do have a quorum at this time. I'll ask for approval of the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion about the minutes? I would just comment that Mr. Cook does a great job. I think in his prior life, he was an English teacher because he corrects every single dot and T and spelling. So I didn't do very well in spelling. So thank you, Mr. Cook, for keeping our minutes straight. So what, could I get a vote on the minutes as presented? Oh, they carry. Awesome. Thank you. At this time, we have a special guest that hangs around, helps us out on a lot of different projects. Ms. Allison Bush, will you please come and do your presentation?
Can you hear me okay? Thank you for having me tonight. I won't take up too much of your time, but I wanted to run through how we got to the point where we did this pavement condition evaluation this year, go over the results with you, and kind of look at our steps going forward. And I'm going to try to, I'm going to pray that technology cooperates tonight. So how we got here, before we did this evaluation, the county had several ways. They put together packages to do their repairs and resurfacing for the roads around the county. As you're aware, SLV takes up a large portion of the county. So you would have SLV staff that would actually drive the roads in the neighborhood. They would evaluate and come up with their own list of what they thought were the worst roads in their neighborhood. And then you would have the Public Works Department. They would receive citizen complaints or just go in about their day-to-day operations. Their staff would note roads in the worst conditions. So you would have these multiple lists, and you would have several different people kind of evaluating and using their own internal criteria to kind of come up with, well, I think this one's worse, or I think these potholes are worse. Let's address these roads worse. And it was, it was very subjective. You didn't have one standard criteria that was being applied across the board. Even if you had someone combined these lists, and you had one person try to drive, say, thirty or forty roads, you get to the point where, okay, I'm doing good. Roads two and three, I'm taking notes. They're in good shape. They don't need any work done to them. But by the time you get to road fifteen or twenty, well, is this road, it's got cracks. Is it worse than the road I drove three hours ago? I don't know. Let me go back to that road and ride it again. So it was really hard to just with the human eye, try to judge and come up with a fair analysis of these roads. So that's what I mean by objective versus subjective. So the county decided to hire a company to come in and drive every county road and do a scientific evaluation. If you take a look at the van up here, this is the equipment that was actually used in McCormick County. You can see it's got all kinds of cameras and lasers. I believe the front piece, it's taking an actual video of the road itself. It's measuring your cracks. It's measuring how wide they are, how long they are, how deep they are. It's measuring your potholes, how big they are, how severe they are. It's taking all of this data and combining it and evaluating every type of fatigue to the road. I'm just showing the reason we picked this company. Not only were they the lowest bid we received, but they've also done local projects throughout South Carolina and North Carolina. So we had a lot of confidence in their ability to give us an accurate assessment. So if you look at the pictures, these are some of the common failures you see across the different roads throughout the county. So when they, when they drove every road, again, every road that was provided to them by the county, not only were they noting the type of distress, they were noting the density, severity, and the extent. So how many cracks were they? How long of a mileage did they extend? How compact were they? So it measured all of these things. It also provided a roughness index. And that's not really based on the, you know, the distress type of the road, but it's how rough the road rides. When you're going down, is there rudding? Are you doing da-dum, da-dum, dum? So that's a separate number. And then they also provided us imagery. If you looked at the top of that van, it had a camera. So it was taking a three hundred and sixty image of every road it drove. So we do also have that imagery data. I'd like to point out this ASTMD sixty-four thirty-three. Not that I expect you guys to go read this unless you need help getting to sleep at night. But this is, this is a standard that is used across the country, and it's now becoming more common to use this internationally as well. It provides a common criteria that everyone goes by. So you have a fair, across-the-board standard to go by when you're evaluating this. So you don't have that subjectivity anymore when you have people out there trying to eyeball this evaluation. So this kind of gives you an idea of what they were collecting, what they saw on their end when they got the data and they were analyzing it. You can see the background. You actually have a physical image of the roadway. You can see all the crackings, and the different colors is telling you the severity of those cracks. So you may have green, that's, you know, not very deep, not very wide, up to the red. That's very deep and very wide. So they would take this and use the, again, the ASTM standard to analyze and put into their formulas to come with, to come up with a ranking of the roads. Something else they also provided is a very neat feature. They provided a GIS website for the county. So the county can actually go in, and they can pull up this map that shows every road that the company drove, and it gives you a color code for the condition of the road. So of course, green is good. Red and dark red is going to be your worst condition. You can actually zoom into these roads, and it will also list the PCI, which is your payment condition index of each road. So this gives you not only the data and a spreadsheet, this also gives you a visual to help you identify the areas you want to put together your next resurfacing packages. So overall, the county is in really good shape compared to other counties in this area. Normally, when you have counties do these evaluations for the first time, they're seeing average PCIs in the sixties usually. The county's average PCI is eighty-one, and you can see here the different categories. We are overall falling into satisfactory, the second highest category in the system. So overall, the county is in really good shape. And again, this is just kind of a bar chart showing you visually the conditions of the road. You can really see that we, the county has no roads that are considered complete failures. So there are no roads at this time of the study that really needs a full rebuild of the road. And that's really great news, because a lot of counties cannot say that. So moving forward, where do we go with this data? Of course, your first, your first choice is to do repairs and resurfacing. Typically, if they're in relatively good shape, maybe they're in the fair to poor, you may be able to just come in and put in overlay. If they're in the port or very poor, you may have to come in and mill. You may have to dig up portions of the road, full depth, and patch back before you can come and resurface. So the data provides us, not only does it provide us the data, it provides us recommendations of what to do to each road as we make these repairs or resurfaces. A second option I'd like to talk about a little bit later is pavement preservation. That's where you're not really addressing your roads in your poor to very poor shape. You're looking at your satisfactory to fair roads. And basically, what this is, is you're applying a surface treatment to extend the life of those roads. So it's in a satisfactory condition. You want to keep it in that condition for a few more years. Looking at the results, again, this is the color-coded map that we got on GIS provided by RAS. You can see, for example, this road, this section of roads right down here in the south portion of the county, this has the worst roads that were ranked in the data that was provided to us. So when we look at things like this, we don't want to simply just take the worst roads first, because it may not make sense to jump around the county. If you have one or two bad roads here in the south end, you have one or two bad roads in the north end. It's going to be more expensive for you to try to do these two roads and these two roads together in one package. So what we would recommend that the county do is look at a group of roads. Maybe some of them are in a little better shape, but we would recommend going ahead and doing those with the bad roads in the area, because overall, that's going to be a better bang for your buck. It's going to be cheaper in the long run. I'd like to briefly mention, I think the county is going to release this a little while later. I think you're waiting for some final information. But the county also did a countywide drainage study. And what this allows us to do is we can, you know, we took a look at every ditch and every culvert that is maintained by the county. We got GPS locations, so now we have a good, accurate inventory for the county. We noted the type of the pipe, the size of the pipe, the condition of the pipe. Is it filled with sediment? Does it just need maintenance, or does it need to be a full repair? We are now, we have this also in GIS map. We are able to overlay it with the road study we did. So now we can not only do pavement repairs, but we can also do a drainage repair at the same time if there's a road that needs both things done to it. So again, this will help the county cut down on money on getting multiple contractors out to the same area. So pavement preservation, this is, this is also a good option for looking at extending the life of your road system and helping your money go a little further. So basically, the idea of pavement preservation, again, you're taking some of your roads that are already in good shape, and you're spending a portion of your funding keeping those in good shape. The products you're putting on them, it's not going to give you another twenty years of life out of your road, but it is going to give you another three to five years for a fraction of the cost. So when you think about some of the counties that have, that, when I mentioned earlier, they have a PCI in the sixties, they basically have this tidal wave of roads that's just looming over their heads. It's just in bad shape. And they can never catch up. You know, they try to spend all their money addressing the worst first. So they take care of maybe ten roads, but then the very next year, they have ten more roads that become bad. So they never get that tidal wave down. So what pavement preservation does is it, you spend some money on your worst roads, but then you take some of your money extending the life of your good roads. So over time, what it helps you do is to knock down that tidal wave into more, into smaller, more manageable waves. So eventually, you have just this nice, small amount of waves that you, that is more manageable with your budget, what funding you have available. I'm sorry, my throat is really dry right now. So some of the things you can do with pavement preservation, you'll see this all over DOT roads, this cracked ceiling. It is really inexpensive, and it's really easy to do. It's a good option for most DOT roads. The only holdback is a lot of county roads, the majority are in residential areas, and nobody wants that on the road you live on. Some of the options in the middle are chip seals, micro-surfacing. These are really thin surfaces that you put on your road. It makes it look nice. It helps seal it. It seals up the cracks again, so you can't get that water intrusion that's going to damage your asphalt further. Again, this only lasts three to five years. Whatever is looming now is killing me. This only lasts three to five years, but again, the idea isn't to give you another twenty-year road life. It's to just, to knock down that tidal wave for you. One other option is a rejuvenator. It's not really, it doesn't look like a pavement. It's really, over time, your asphalt tends to lose certain molecules that bind it together. This is really just putting back those molecules that the asphalt is losing over time. So it really does make your asphalt look brand-new. But again, it does not provide any structure to the road, and it only lasts that three to five years. I believe that's it. I wanted to leave a little bit of time for any questions.
Ms. Bush, that was an awesome presentation. Well-needed and well-accepted, and we thank you severely, definitely, for all the efforts went into it. I want to mention real quickly that I know our roads and bridge director, Mr. Mears, is here tonight. He's played a big part. CTC played a big part in this, and of course, you being our engineering contract, I know a lot of time and energy in putting these packages and stuff together, so we can't thank you enough. And I'm going to open it up for, just, I'm going to open it up for council. Ask any questions.
Just one.
Comments.
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned it's on a website. Can you give us that, so that we can share it with the public?
Public Works does have the GIS website.
Okay. And it's on the county website already?
If the county does want to release that. The county does also have the data in a spreadsheet form that if you would like to release. What we did add beyond what was provided to us by RAS, we did go in, and I believe I sent this to you. If I didn't, let me know. We went in and also added a column that showed each council district that each road is in. So we, you know, you can always update the public on which districts are getting which roads.
And would this presentation be something we could share with the public since you presented it in the public?
Yes, ma'am. I can send this.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We have met on this, and it has been discussed with a number of members of council, the county administrator, some of our stakeholders. And some of the things that we discussed, you didn't mention in your presentation, and that was, there are other factors that must be taken into consideration in formulating project proposals for funding, because the mechanical review of the roads does not include the comparative traffic on those roads, how quickly some of those roads may be deteriorating, construction that is occurring that will further deteriorate those roads, and a variety of other factors that, in putting together a project plan, you can't just repair those that are marked in red. Because if you just repair the worst potholes and everything else, you're going to be spread all over the place, and you're not going to be able to get a contract in order to repair that at a reasonable price, because contractors don't like to move their equipment around and do a lot of other things. So I just want to acknowledge and make clear that there are other factors to take into consideration when you actually get down to designing project proposals for funding.
Yes, sir. I will say that Thomas and Hutton was not staffed. We were not tasked with doing anything other than the evaluation. It would be up to the county to decide if there are other factors they would like to put into this and to put into future packages. I can say from experience, you did mention construction. That is a very good point. From what I have seen in other counties, it's, it's a tough call if you want to spend money now building up, fixing a road that has no houses on it that could, in the next couple of years, see a ton of construction traffic, because that's just going to tear up the brand-new asphalt you put down. You could put down double and triple the thickness of asphalt, and it'll stand up to that construction traffic. But then again, you've just wasted a lot of extra money for a couple of years of traffic when you had roads with houses already on it that are crumbling. So there are a lot of different factors, like you said, that would be up to the county to decide.
That would, that would include, for example, economic development and the, how much funds that was, that it would generate. For example, if you had a relatively unpopulated area, not a lot of construction, not a lot of sales, not a lot of prospects for additional homes or home sites versus an area, for example, that was a little further developed, maybe the roads are not quite in the same condition of deterioration, but repair would go a long way towards generating additional economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I would comment on that. If you attended the meeting that we, the call meeting where we discussed all these different factors with her initial presentation, and we all left there knowing that there would be a focus group formed with the major stakeholders, and our objective is to get county government out of it, county council out of it, and let this group take all those factors into, and all the key players have been invited to this focus group to present these roads and with, for us to bless. And so that, we do record what your concerns are, and we are addressing those. But my thing is, it gets the politics out of these roads, and we're doing a scientific method of selecting the roads that need to be done. And I'll just comment, the biggest concern is the total mileage that we have in the village. There's over ninety-plus miles of road, so nearly ninety percent of all the roads are in the village. So the village doesn't need to worry about getting shorted on funding, because the rest of the county roads, Mr. Mears, you can correct me, is about twenty miles? Twelve more miles, and that's in lost wilderness that we'll correct. And once those are brought up, then the majority of the funding that we receive from CTC will go to do a lot of these things that have been mentioned. So I'm very, very excited, very thankful that we finally got around to scientifically dealing with all these road issues, because every county, I mean, every district has a little pet peeve, a little project that we need to take care of. So I look forward to hearing back from all of y'all when y'all come up with these lists for us to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you indicating and acknowledging that there is substantial room and need for stakeholder input into the development of these projects. And as you indicated, there is a group that's going to work on that, and I'm sure they'll come up with a satisfactory project listing that we can take to the County Transportation Committee for funding.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
I'd just like to thank you for your presentation. It surprised me. I know our roads are at satisfaction, seventy-one to eighty-five percent. So that's good. And these roads with the crack in them, that ceiling, that's, is that very economically?
If you do the crack ceiling, it is the only problem, and I'll just go ahead and be blunt, it's ugly. But it is, it's very fast and it's very cheap.
Yep. Anyone else?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Bush, thank you so very much, and look forward to hearing more from you and getting some of these roads taken care of. Okay. At this time, we will, we call for our speakers. We let it be known that the Honorable Mr. Parks Auditor will not be speaking to us tonight. A little later on, before we address the resolution, there's an issue. It's come up with some of the numbers. So we will have a special call meeting to deal with that. So Ms. Elam, is she here?
Yes.
Elam.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, giving honor to God, our Chair Councilman, Mr. Hammy, members of the county council, McCormick County Council, board members and visitors and friends. I, it's me again.
Thought you just here last month.
No, sir. I stand before you on behalf of the McCormick Edgefield Ref Cancer Awareness Committee. This year, we are having another walk. Our walk will be October the eleventh at the Mack Park, starting at nine o'clock. And I come this afternoon to ask you all for your help, your prayers, and your donations, because cancer is something serious. It has affected all of us in our lifetime, if not us, someone we know, someone we love, and someone we live next to. So you don't have to know a person to help fight for cancer. We need your donation. We need your prayers. We need to work together. Bees and honey works together. Bees work together to make good, sweet honey, and everybody loves something sweet. So my prayers is that let's work together for this cause, and prayerfully, one day, I don't know what we're going to be, or I'm going to be, it will be a cure for cancer. So we have to name it and claim it, and help us to come together to fight for this good cause and help someone that might get the news tomorrow that you have this disease. And we have flyers here. See our flyers here? And we have levels that you can donate to us on. But you know, Proverbs three, four, and five say, "Trust in the Lord. Confide in thine heart and lean not to thy own understanding." The word says, "In all thy ways acknowledge him, and he will and shall direct thy path." So let's work together. Let's pray together, and through it all, let's give to help fight for cancer. Thank you. Is there any questions or comments?
Counsel.
They're like, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We just like to say McCormick Edgefield, well done when you first started. You didn't have a goal, how much money you were trying to raise. You can't raise enough money. Because it's going to take money to help fight this disease, like you said, that affects all of us. If you don't do it individually, it affects some of our family, or someone that we know of, our neighbors. And so, and every year, you've been setting that goal a little bit high, and I think you're going to set it a little bit high this year. But it's going to take donation to do that. And you got all these peoples in here. They can't wait when you get on outside to sign up to give you a donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have to agree one hundred percent with the presentation that you gave. I think it's... Uh, I think it's, um, it's very timely, um, personally. I have, um, my wife and I have both experienced, um, the kinds of issues that you have raised with respect to, um, this dread disease of being able to strike anyone at any time, and, um, when it, when it happens, it's absolutely devastating. Uh, I would, I would very much like to, um, recommend that, uh, council make a donation, and I know that we, um, we're normally a gold sponsor, so I would make, um, a motion, if it is not out of place, um, that council become a, a, a gold, a gold donor and donate five hundred dollars to this cause, um, this evening.
Second, that motion.
Got a first and second on a five hundred dollar gold donation to the Ref Cancer Walk. Do, uh, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to say that, um, my natural inclination would be to give more, uh, but we're not quite in the same financial shape that we have been in prior years, so, um, I think, uh, I think five hundred dollars is probably an appropriate donation at this point in time.
I'm gonna call for a vote, all in favor. If it passes, we thank you. My final comment is, thank you for your dedication and the glow about you, and very, very sincere in helping others, and that means a lot.
Thank you, Chairman, and board members. Thank you.
Now, for public comment period, Ms. Lawrence.
Yes, sir. Bob Seim.
Uh, my name is Bob Seim, live in Savannah Lakes. Um, just wanted to start off by saying big thanks to Mark Warner for all the work he and his crews and contractors and National Guard did out at the airport. That's a transformation that's just unbelievable. And being a pilot myself, it's very much appreciated. You never know when that crosswind will blow you off the end of that runway, but, uh, no, it's just absolutely gorgeous what he's done out there. And I was just curious, is there a timeline for the paving, to patch the runway, to open it up? Does anybody know? Obviously, you can't answer that question, but...
Mr. Warner, has my permission if he can answer briefly?
My, my hope is that between beginning of October and middle of October, we do have a call.
And we'll have a fly-in.
Yeah, that's what we want to do, everybody make sure that we can stretch the weather we're having.
Continues.
Could include the parking lot, too? Yeah, yeah, awesome. Again, phenomenal job.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I was gonna talk about the water issues, but I'll let Randy do that. I had a, uh, something else that, uh, I wanted to bring up. For the last fifteen years of my career, I did pavement management for the city of Colorado Springs. I had a, started out with a seventeen million dollar budget. The problem was, when you have someone like, as Allison stand up here and tell you that she has a way to analyze your pavement, our problem is we had eighty-eight million worth of repairs to do. You're gonna be challenged with a lot of decisions in the near future. Trust what she does. She's got the right equipment, she's got the programs. They'll put out spreadsheets for you that'll explain it all to you, and I'm, am I under the correct assumption they've never used Chip Seal in this county? There's one of the other problems you're gonna have. Chip Seal is a product that, if you can do it, it's, what, a fifth of the cost of an overlay, which is what you are doing, including SLV. I was, that's why I asked the question, it's like, that's a perfect candidate to chip, and you won't be paving that thing for years. Save you a ton of money. That's what she's gonna try to tell you. Listen to what she says. Asphalt pavement has a very short lifespan. The unfortunate part with it is, when it reaches that point of deterioration, it's not a nice and gentle little curve, it's, it just falls off. And she'll show you the, she'll show you all the proof of that nationwide. She's hitting on everything that we used to do. Trust what she says, and try to find contractors that you can get in to do, um, maybe one of the solutions is to do a big contract with Chip Seal. You're in that percentile, you can do it, and that'll extend the life of your pavement many, many years to avoid that big ouch overlay thing, 'cause they're lovely, I do enjoy them, but oh God, they're costly. So, trust what she is about to show you and tell you, because it's just, it's, it's been run through the system so many times, everybody knows exactly how to do it, they're just gonna show you how to do it. Then you, the politics in terms of who's doing a development somewhere, you, those are the challenges you're gonna have. You have to sometimes throw those out. One of the other things I can suggest to you is, you mentioned drainage. One thing that we learned in Colorado Springs, you fix that drainage before you do any kind of an overlay, not so much of Chip Seal, but an overlay. The reason for it is, is when you put that brand-new asphalt down, there's the worst thing you can do is cut it. It's just gonna fail.
Yes, sir. You have time, so...
Yep. So, anyway, in conclusion, again, thank you so much. You did such a wonderful job out there on that airport. It's great. Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Ms. Lawrence.
Randy Foss.
Hi, my name is Randy Foss. Good to see you all again. Um, Mr. Chairman, council members, and our new administrator. Uh, over a year ago, many residents got involved to stop a five-year, single-source contract with CWS. At the time, the terms were changed to one year with a commitment from council to develop an RFQ, which is Request for Quotation, not qualifications, for a competitive bid within twelve months. Since we didn't have an administrator was in place, I understand why the RFQ was not developed. So, I, I agree to a one-year renewal if the council recommits to develop an open competitive bid process in the next twelve months. Number two, CWS presents to the residents of McCormick County what they have accomplished to improve and maintain the water and sewer system over the last twelve months. And lastly, CWS presents a plan on what they will be proactively implementing to improve our system over the next twelve months. Secondly, I have repeatedly asked for a plan for the SLV water quality and pressure issues. The McCormick County Water Capacity Update of December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, by Thomas and Hutton, glad to see you're here, identified approximately twenty million in projects for McCormick County. With the situation in Kelvin Falls, the residents of McCormick County deserve an open and transparent plan to resolve our water issues. During the town hall at SLV, the council committed to be open and transparent. As stated during the town hall, the plan needs to be a living document. The information provided by Councilman, by Councilman Cook on our neighbor link system was a good start. Thanks, Chuck. It was good to see that. SLV residents need monthly updates and quarterly town halls with at least two council members and our administrator until this issue is resolved or a concrete plan with dates and funding sources are in place. I'm gonna have to leave early because my wife had a hip replacement a week ago, and I gotta go make supper and walk the dog. Thanks.
Thank you. I was wondering where, where the filter was. Thank you very much. Anyone else, Ms. Lawrence?
No one else.
Thank you, folks. At this time, we'll enter into our decision items. Decision item one, ordinance twenty-five dash oh seven, an ordinance creating the McCormick County Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Council will consider this first reading title only, and just a clarification on title only, it's just a placeholder. Uh, we will not have a lot of discussion. I know we gonna vote on it, but, uh, more discussion will come forth by the second reading. What do I hear?
So moved.
Yeah.
Here, and we're not gonna have discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm not gonna discuss the, uh, the ordinance, but I would like to say I appreciate very much, um, from one of the few times actually having a written document to look at in the first reading, which is very unusual for us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, for that comment. Uh, all in favor of first reading, raise your right hand, please. It carries. Resolution oh-three dash twenty-five, council to consider accepting. Nope. At this time, we do have a problem with the numbers that's been presented to us, so I'm gonna ask to table this.
Move to table.
Second.
We got a first and a second. Any further discussion on table this item? We will have a special call meeting next week with our assessor to, uh, address these couple little issues that we need to work out. Here, none? Could I, all in favor of table it in the next week? It carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are we ready to announce a date for that meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry, um, it's whatever Tuesday is.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, it's six-thirty. Right. It initially went out at five-thirty, but Mr. Jennings and I have a prior meeting, so we'll be here by six-thirty for that call meeting, and the public is, public is welcome. Uh, resolution number three is resolution oh-four dash twenty-five, a resolution appointing county administrator as alternate to the Tri-County Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority. Council consider this resolution. What do I hear?
Move that the resolution be passed.
A second.
And during the discussion part of this, I've asked our vice chairman, since he's served on this board for quite some time, if he would, uh, brief the public on what that position means, and by, uh, Mr. Churchill being our alternate, uh, and he agreed to share briefly about Three Rivers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Three Rivers consists of nine counties. This where all your garbage go down to SRS, that's Savannah River Site, and that's where it be buried, and the, the nine counties, Aiken, Attendale, Edfield, Bamburgh, Bon, Bonwell, Calhoun, McCormick, Saluda, and Orangeburg counties. This will help offset a lot of the costs for working together with these nine counties, and they've been working together over twenty-five years, ever since De had made it a lauda that we had to start burying our garbage. No longer we could put it in our backyards for health issues, and that, uh, we're looking forward in near future, um, burying a new sale, which this sale gonna consist of about twenty-six million dollars, give or take, and, um, next week, not next week, but next month, the bond attorney will come before county council and address concerning that the county will have to pass a resolution to, uh, support burying this new sale. And then, we meet by the other quarterly, and from time to time, the old administrators, all nine meet, and they had to tap me, and they the one who set the rate increase, if we got to do a rate increase for attorney fees and all, and so, and at the same time, by being an attorney, if I'm not present, you will sit in and take control. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for that, uh...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Well, I hope we're not taking that twenty-six million and dividing by nine.
No. We'll do a bond, it won't be divided by nine. It'll take all of your help, so...
Okay, here, no further discussion. Could I get a vote on appointing, uh, him, uh, Mr. Upchurch as our alternate, right hand, please? It carries. Now, our fourth item is council will consider authorizing the administrator to enter into a one-year agreement with Clearwater Solutions to provide professional services related to the operation, maintenance, and management of the water distribution and sewer collection system. What do I hear?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I think it was, was, as was pointed out during, uh, the public comment period, uh, when we renewed the CWS contract last year, that was done with the understanding that, uh, we would have an RFP out on the street and make a decision with respect to what we were going to do for, with the future, future contractual support for the water and sewer, uh, department, um, before that contract expired. And as also was pointed out, there were legitimate reasons why that was not carried out, but with respect to this motion to authorize the administrator to enter into that one-year agreement, I would like to amend this, uh, so I propose a, uh, a motion to amend, um, this as follows. This authorization is contingent upon the issuance of a request for proposals for any future contractual support for the water and sewer department no later than February first, twenty-twenty-six. Now, that's not the word of a contract, but that is having an RFP on the street by that date.
Mr. Chairman, as far as being contingent, the contract ends, um, this month, I think next month, so it needs to be signed by October one, so it can't be contingent on that. I, I understand what, Mr. Cook, I understand what you're saying, and you want to have the, have a, have a bid process, but instead of being contingent on that, that as a, as a condition of, um, executing this one-year contract...
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not proposing to modify the, uh, the paragraph that is before us, which authorizes the administrator to enter into a one-year agreement with Clearwater Solutions.
Just as, as long as that's understood, that the contract can be signed, 'cause it does run out, and then you would do the RFP you requested by February.
The only, the only thing that is contingent is council's approval. We are approving this contingent on...
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
That, that would be fine.
Okay.
You could do that.
Okay.
Uh, but, but the agreement will be signed. And by the way, I reviewed the agreement, uh, made a couple of changes to it. It's the same agreement that was, was done last year. I mean, it's, it's based, basically the same, scope of service is the same, the, uh, county's duties, CWS's duties are the same. Um, I took out a, an indemnification provision that had kind of snuck in after I reviewed it in September, it didn't have it in, but when I saw the, the final signed document, it did, I don't know how it ended with that, and I took that out, they agreed to it.
Okay.
So we're, it's, it's in good shape. It's the same contract, and actually, it's the same amount of money, too. Exactly the same.
Ms. Upchurch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've had an opportunity to speak with all the council members regarding this issue, and we will go through a competitive bid process. We've all had conversations about this, it's our intention to do that, and it's my commitment to the public that we will go through the competitive bid process, um, in a timely manner.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second on Mr. Cook's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could, I'd like for us to do that as a separate motion or amendment altogether, and not make it part of this, to, to keep what's here for the one year, and then at some point in time, do another, um, motion or recommendation or something that says we will do something by February in terms of RFP, but to keep this clear as it is right now.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I would comment also along those same lines. I am, personally have talked to Mr. Upchurch. We're typically, we're gonna schedule a fall workshop, probably around the first of November... We're typically, we're gonna schedule a fall workshop, probably around the first of November, and this type of item will definitely be discussed there. We usually invite at our workshops, uh, Clearwater does come to those who do a presentation. And I want to reiterate, I, I know we, it took us a lot longer than we anticipated on hiring our new administrator. He came on board, I think, July?
Seven.
Seven. So, he's only had a couple months, and to try to put all this together, uh, would be almost impossible and be rushed. We want to do it right. And so, uh, I think the workshop that we planned to call and, uh, we'll do one fall and spring, and probably maybe one summertime, and we need to meet more often, uh, to resolve some of these long-term issues. But to put a date and, to, as Ms. Brown said tonight, on our new administrator, let's let him, uh, continue to get his feet wet and get, understand the, the dynamics in the government of McCormick County, and, uh, as he ma, as he stated, uh, we've all, uh, told him our concerns and what we'd like to see done, and, uh, he's a man of his words, I'm sure we will be able to come before the public of, and handle this appropriately, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Under those conditions, I will withdraw my motion, but I will make another one.
Okay. I'm not surprised.
And that is, and that is a, uh, a completely separate motion from this, uh, that simply says that county council is committed, um, to issue a request for proposals for any future contractual support for the Water and Sewer Department within the next year.
Do I get a second?
We need to carry this one, don't we?
Yes.
No, I withdrew it.
You withdrew.
And then he added another one, so we gotta vote on this, and before we do our final vote. Do I get a second on this second amendment? Taking the word of our administrator that it'll be handled appropriately.
It'll be okay, Mr. Jim.
Here are none, so can I, I'm gonna call for a vote on the one-year extension, as mentioned, and on this agenda. All in favor, right hand? Over, opposed? Yeah, one opposed.
Two?
Got two opposed, Ms. Brown. All right, let's see, I think that gets us down to committee reports. Ms. Brown?
Sir. Um, we attended Upper Savannah Council Government's area meeting. Um, during the month of August, we traveled to different churches for revivals and just to say hello to people in our district. Went to the meet and greet for Dr. Jermaine Johnson at the MEMS Community Center, who has, um, set up an exploratory committee for our governor. Attended the guest who's coming to dinner event at the McCormick Hotel. Um, I just want to mention the upcoming events, I'm sure somebody else will as well. Um, Gold Rush Festival is this Saturday. Um, the parade people are still looking for entries, it's not too late, I think if you want to be in the parade, that's at ten o'clock, and all events will be over at the Matt Hardy Field. Also on Saturday, there's a banquet that the council members are usually invited to at three o'clock at the WSMM's Activity Center. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cook?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It was a very busy month for meetings. I'm not gonna go through all the, uh, the list of meetings that I attended, but I attended a lot, um, for generally, um, uh, all of the, the commissions and board meetings that I normally attend at SLV, uh, the school district, uh, the, the town council, although the town council did not have a, a quorum, they are meeting as we speak. Um, did a lot of webinars, uh, from NACO and the Census Bureau, um, and did quite a few other, uh, meetings, but rather than discuss those specific meetings, there are some issues, uh, that I think came out of that collectively that I would like to mention. There is a major reorganization that is going on of the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Um, some of you may have heard about it, some may not. Uh, essentially, they are moving a substantial portion of USDA out of Washington, D.C., into five regional offices. Um, basically, what will be kept, um, in Washington will be the secretary's office and administrative management, uh, but they're gonna be going to places like Kansas City, Fort Collins, Colorado, and, um, and some other locations. As a part of that, um, there are a number of issues that are pending with respect to USDA funding. Uh, there're gonna be substantial cuts in a lot of programs, including the Forest Service, but also, uh, one that, uh, has a direct impact, a possible direct impact on us, is cutting the funds for USDA rural development infrastructure projects. And if we're going to do something with respect to improving our water and sewer situation, whether it's building a new water tower, or laying new pipe, building new facilities, um, the cost is such that we will need some support probably from USDA, uh, in order to construct tho, that, uh, those type of facilities. So we're monitoring this very carefully to see what the, uh, what the final impact is going to, uh, is gonna be. Obviously, we have continuing issues, um, at SLV and the county as a whole with respect to water quality pressure, um, and we are working as diligently as we possibly can to try to determine what our options are, whether we, um, what the status of the contract is with, uh, with Calhoun Falls, whether or not we can get out of it without, uh, paying an exorbitant price. Uh, as a lot of you know, the, um, our current contract with Calhoun Falls is being held as a surety against USDA rural development loans for, um, for five loans, uh, that have been made to, uh, to Calhoun Falls. Um, I'm sorry, three loans that have been made to Calhoun Falls. Um, drainage in the village is also an issue. A number of, uh, individuals have come forward to me and to others, asking for revisions in, uh, county ordinances to provide some enforcement mechanism, to make sure that when homes are constructed in the village, um, they are consistent with, um, um, standard drainage patterns that do not impact their neighbors. And, um, this is, uh, something that is on my list when we do have, uh, some future workshops. Um, we're gonna look very carefully at the drainage study that has, uh, has been done, which council has not yet seen, and we're going to look at possible changes to the, um, existing ordinances and the resources that would be required to enforce any changes that we did implement. But that is, uh, an important issue that, uh, that we need to consider. We have also delayed based on the, um, uh, the pending road study, um, that, um, Ms. Bush presented, for at least the last eight months, uh, allocations for road improvements from the County Transportation Committee. Um, now that we have the, the study done, and that we have a group set up to, uh, develop projects, we are hoping to have proposals to the County Transportation Committee for those road projects in October, probably give them, uh, a month to consider it, so we'll have final allocations hopefully in November. I want to say something about the, uh, Little River Electric, uh, annual meeting and election that was held last week. Um, we have, um, uh, there was only one contested election this year, and we will have a new representative in, uh, in the district that represents most of the, uh, of the western part of the county. Um, the new representative is, um, uh, Jesse. Uh, he goes by his nickname Hambone Hammond's. Um, and so he'll be taking the place of, uh, of Mike Johnson. I want to commend Mike Johnson, who has had nearly forty years of service on the Little Elec, Electric Cooperative Board. He probably knows more about construction and electric, uh, production and, and distribution than any of the other board members. And I want to say that Mike was a, a key person in the county during, um, Hurricane Helene in keeping us all updated, and serving as a liaison between the, um, uh, the council and, uh, the, um, uh, the Little River Board, uh, the linemen who were doing the repairs to make sure that, uh, our work was done on a priority basis, and I'd like to thank him for, uh, for his long service. Finally, um, I did attend, um, a hearing that was held this week on the referendum petitions, um, that have been pending for more than three years. Um, and we finally got to a point where, uh, we have a judge who is willing to hear the merits of that case, and so hopefully, um, we can, uh, bring this to a conclusion one way or the other within, um, say, the next thirty, thirty to sixty days.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Mr. Murrow?
Our county report at this time.
Mr. Jennings?
Thank you, Ms. Jim. We attended a county planning meeting, and, uh, our economic director, Mr. Warner, gave a committed, uh, up, update, and fully let them know about all the work I did at the airport, and that how, how the National Guards saved us over, over five and a half million dollars. And, um, also Councilman Cook, he was there, and he gave a update from the county, and planning, they looking at the, the comprehensive plan, started doing some work on that, and also want to continue to promote our beautiful lake. Then we, people on TET have a groundbreaking on September the twenty-four at ten a.m. This is a family life and conference center. They conveyed also that the president, Dr. Uber River, and our area commission, Chair Brown, they can work in, and they scheduled it, hope to be here next council meeting, they, 'cause they have a meeting on that same day, but their meeting is at four, and it was finished in time for they could come down and get a council, and the citizens of McCormick County, update on what's going on, so at P. Montez. And I've been forestated, just don't forget about it, coming out Saturday, September the twentieth, the four, Gold Run Parade, which is starting at ten a.m., and then they'll move over to Matt Hardy Park later. And also, Upper Savannah Council Government continue to do a great job saving money here for McCormick. They providing meal for seniors and disabled people. They served over the last couple months, over nine hundred and three homes, and that, you know, had up the mileage, over a thousand miles that they provided. Also, people on TET signed bill, it's, uh, it's on the way, with that bill called about eleven-point-three million dollars. That's, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Mr. Upchurch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to share an update from Mark, our Economic Development Director. He already briefly went over one of those updates, um, but in a recent meeting, he submitted, he told you that he was going to submit a grant application to South Carolina Aeronautics Commission. We have received that grant and been awarded, uh, forty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars for the perimeter fence design and bid package for the fence at the airport. Also, the company that's going into, um, the industrial part, Microtechnic, they are installing equipment now. They have also produced one batch of their samples, they're going through the hiring process currently, and so we hope to have them, um, open and in production over the next month or two. Mark already mentioned that the airport should be open in the next month or two as well, and so we'll provide an update on that when, um, when the planes can come in. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is the drainage study. It was, uh, brought up by Mr. Cook earlier, there will be a drainage study presentation at the next council meeting, um, and we'll also make sure that you have the presentation and the data that goes along with that prior to. Um, also want to let the public know that we will announce our emergency services director and deputy director in upcoming weeks. Uh, we've been having interviews over the last two weeks, we're close to making a decision, um, and we hope to make that decision next week. Um, the last thing, Mr. Chairman, is I just want to recognize our school system for their great achievement. Hopefully, uh, next council meeting, we'll do a formal recognition with the superintendent, um, but they have done something that is really amazing. They were number one in the state for growth in test scores in reading and language arts, and they were number three in the state for growth in math. And so that's a tremendous accomplishment. I know that, uh, Dr. Hembry, um, is going to mention it in the meeting with the superintendent that's upcoming, um, I believe, this week?
Thursday.
Thursday. Um, the state superintendent will be coming to the school system and, and giving, uh, a speech, so, um, great things going on in the county. Our staff have been great to work with, the board continues, um, to be supportive, and I look forward, uh, to continue in our efforts. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you for a great report. Mine will be very briefly, just a couple extra, uh, notes. I particularly, Mr. Murrow did not mention it, but I'm very proud, he took the leadership to form, help form a focus group to deal with the Humane Society and our dog issue throughout our county, the sheriff department is involved, Ms. Laura's back there shaking her head, I think it went really well. And that's what we gotta do, is start forming these small groups to help us resolve these issues where we don't have all the conflict, where you get people in a room, keep them in there till they can come to some sort of consensus to resolve the issue. We know we have a, a, uh, animal issue in this county, it takes a lot of money to resolve all the things that we probably should be doing, but if we take small steps, it's gonna mean, uh, a lot, and, uh, I, I appreciate him particularly leading that and y'all's involvement. I do, uh, I tend, I go to the Medical Dental College of, uh, Augusta and had my teeth cleaned today, and my student was bragging, she's from South Georgia somewhere, she was bragging about adopting Mary Jane, a pound dog, and she named her Molly, and she says, and she showed me all these pictures of the dog that she adopted. Now, this is why I'm, they working in my mouth, we talking about dogs, so, uh, it was very encouraging the way she bragged about our Humane Society. I know they fuss at us a good bit, so I'm giving credit where credit's due, and, uh, so thank you for your service, and David will continue to spearhead that, uh, and bring those reports to us, so I thought that was worth mentioning. The sheriff's department is heavily involved in that, and they've come up with some ideas to help, um, containment and that kind of stuff, so you, my, law enforcement can carry that back to the sheriff for me if you don't mind. Uh, I know it's been mentioned that we will have a, uh, Charlie Kirk, uh, Kirk, eight-thirty vigil at the dawn meal, I think that's Thursday at eight-thirty.
Yes, Thursday.
Is it Thursday? Crystal, I didn't, didn't have my flyer with me, so, uh, if you want, would like to attend that, it'd be, uh, worth attending, uh...
Is that AM or PM?
Oh, AM.
Okay.
Is it AM?
It's AM.
Okay, good, I'm glad, 'cause I would've been here at eight-thirty without looking at my thing, good deal.
Well, it could've been eight-thirty PM if it's candlelight vigil, so...
I have to go look. Everybody, don't, don't take my word for it, look it up, 'cause I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the, the time of it is.
It's that morning, eight-thirty to nine, that morning.
Okay, that morning, that's awesome, thanks for clarifying that. I did want to briefly, I know we've definitely passed this, but, uh, the water's been mentioned quite frequently, and, uh, we, I still feel like it's very important for us, and I know Mr. Upchurch has started visiting Aviville and some of these other people that are so, that are suppliers, and would love to see a formal contingency plan if we do have a failure. It's personally my biggest concern, what happens if Calhoun Falls just completely fails? What can we do? So, uh, I'm asking, I actually went by CPW yesterday to talk to Ms. Daniels, and I mentioned it to Mr. Upchurch, if he would try to pull together as ASAP a board meeting with, uh, with their board... their board, with the county council, and stakeholders, so we can get some answers in us, them, and they. We, as I just mentioned, get in a room and come up with some plans on what we can do if something was to turn south and get a lot worse. So did want to mention that, and I'm sure you'll be working on getting, setting us up a date, and just let us know when you want to do that. And basically, that's all I have. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. We do not have an executive session scheduled, a great crowd, and that's what takes everyone's involvement. Looking over at CPW, I did have a request for them briefly. Once again, we hear a lot with the renewal of the contract, transparency probably is the best thing that we can do together to inform the public exactly what y'all are doing on a monthly basis. I know you sent us a small report, but particularly, I don't know if we can post it on our website of where we need to post it, but we need for you folks to really detail what's taking, what you, what everyone's doing on a monthly basis and the cost involved, because the biggest thing I hear is, we paying all this money, what are we getting? So let's prove to the public where their, where their dollars are being spent. If you could help with that, or recommendation with Mr. Church here, I'd appreciate it. I have no further other comments.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I want to remind everyone, the sheriff is gonna have his conversations with Coffey. Is it gonna be in Parksville Town Hall Saturday morning? With DEA is gonna be there, gonna be the speaker, so invite everybody to that.
Councilman, what, what time is that?
I think it's eight a.m. Isn't that right? Is that right, Frankie? Eight o'clock.
That's all I have, a motion to adjourn.
So move it, Jeff.
All in favor? Go home. Appreciate you.